This regular meeting of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM November 1, 2022 in room 137 of the Edison Building. This board acknowledges this site and all our PS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. Interested members of the public are welcomed and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/ISD535 where the live stream video may be found. Present at this meeting are school board members Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Michelle Seaberson. Ms. Seaberson, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Director Amundson.
Here.
Clerk Barlow.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Treasurer McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
And Director Workman.
Here.
Thank you.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the common citizens, one nation, on paper and in principle, with liberty and justice for all.
2.01, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, agenda is approved. 3.01, there are no comments to the board this evening. 4.01, board member committee update. Any board members have committee work that they would like to update the board on?
Yes.
Yes?
Not really. I'm just stretching.
Okay, no, this is fine. A number of us were at the kickoff to kindergarten event. Our early childhood staff did a great job of hosting that event for kids who will be going into kindergarten next year and their families. Under community engagement, I talked at that event to Sherri Knutson, who is our Director of Student Nutrition Services, and she gave an example, just hang on, not yet, she gave an example, we have split second timing here, an example of a real partnership with the school district. We have so many both profit and not-for-profit organizations who work with our schools, with our families, with our students, and she told me that the compressor unit that runs the large FSC freezer, the FSC is a big school district building where we keep a lot of the food that's used for student lunches. It went down early Thursday morning during MEA. There was a huge inventory there, and they needed someplace to put it, so they contacted Lawrence Transportation, it's a Rochester company, who sent a driver to Winona to pick up a refrigeration vehicle, drive it up here. They unloaded all the inventory from the freezer that wasn't working in this truck, where they let it up, where it could stay cold for four days, and so the food was saved, the day was saved. Sherri especially wants to thank John Baldwin, who works in operations for Lawrence Transportation, and was wonderful to work with, she said. Also, there are our PS employees who were not planning on spending their Thursday during MEA unloading and reloading food, Pete Seamers, Josh Weathersby, Dave Winman, Natasha Lempke, and Jane Dolan for their help during this emergency. And, okay, and the last update, Ms. Michelle Seaberson has accepted a new position in the district, so this will be her last meeting as Assistant Board Clerk. You can just stop typing for a minute. She has provided a presence and a voice over the last two years of confidence, of calm, and of optimism. She has faced, as this district, this community has faced unprecedented challenges and changes for our school district, for our families, for our students, and through it all, she has shared her intelligence, her expertise, and her empathy with all of us, and as board chair, I don't know what I would have done without her, the number of times she's kicked me gently when I've gotten something wrong. And so I want to thank you, Michelle, on behalf of the board for standing, actually sitting next to us for all this time. We'll miss you in the boardroom, but we are so grateful you'll still be here with us in the district now.
I want to second that on behalf of not just board members, but all of our staff. Michelle, you have been grace under pressure, and the board's loss is my gain because Michelle's new position is Assistant to the Superintendent for Strategic Plan Implementation, which she'll be doing on a part-time basis, but I know it will also keep her very connected not only to this board but to our schools and communities. So we look forward to that, and thank you again for your leadership and your service.
Thank you very much.
Michelle Seaberson is never at a loss of words. You come back anytime. Okay, thank you. 5.0, consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda, or any items you want removed for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, consent agenda is approved. 6.01, under the focus topic, strategic plan systems change initiatives, school belonging and behavior update. Dr. Pecel.
Dr. Marvin, and Directors of the Board, as you know, along with a very strong emphasis on academic success, deeper learning, and multi-tiered systems of academic support, we are also working to create positive, safe, and inclusive school cultures in our school communities, and tonight, the board is going to receive an update on the next phases of that work. The two Bs in the title, belonging and behavior, are intentional, and they really go together. It's the positive effort to create environments in which all kids can be and become their best selves, and to hold students accountable for the kind of behavior that we know creates those kind of learning environments. I am pleased to share, for the first time, two data points on how that's going. As the board knows, we track disciplinary infractions very carefully, and the disciplinary infractions that get counted as misbehaviors in our system range from academic dishonesty, alcohol, tobacco or drug use, bullying, harassment, interruption of the learning environment, language of threats, physical aggression, fighting assaults, property damage, sexual assault or misconduct, trespassing, or possession of weapons. In the first two months of this school year, compared to the first two months of last school year, across the district as a whole, we have seen a 28% reduction in disciplinary infraction. That reduction is, I think, a very promising sign of the value of this strategy. Of course, part of that strategy is holding students accountable, and so it's important to also note, we have seen a 4% increase in the use of out-of-school suspension, which is, except for expulsion, the most serious consequence for misbehavior. Now, that 4%, which is barely statistically significant, has not been across the district. We have seen a limited number of schools which are, with close supervision and dialogue with the district, utilizing suspension as a consequence. And so every once in a while, people wonder, are you holding kids accountable for strong behavior? I think that data speaks for itself. Disciplinary infractions are down, our strategic use of disciplinary consequences is slightly up. In the update that you're going to hear from now, we're going to start with that district-wide picture. We're also going to have a mini case study of Willow Creek Middle School, and we have some colleagues from Willow Creek who are here to tell that story. They're going to be back in December to talk about their academic agenda, but tonight we asked them to come and talk about that behavior work. At Willow Creek Middle School, in the first two years of this year, we have seen a 58% reduction in disciplinary infractions and a 32% decrease in suspensions. That, Directors of the Board, I think, is further evidence that when our school communities embrace both belonging and behavior, they are headed in the right direction, and it's our privilege to support them. So with that as the overview of where we are, I'm going to ask our Chief of Schools, Jackie Peterson, to come up and begin this update, and she's got some folks, I'm glad we've got microphones for them. I will just say to the colleagues who are going to be joining us up here, please pull the mic to, in front of you, so that the board and people out watching, our millions of viewers on YouTube can all hear you, because every once in a while, people lean over to the mic, and we really do want to hear you, and thank you for making time in your busy schedules to join us here today. So Jackie and the team.
Chair Marvin, Superintendent Pecel, and members of the board, it is absolutely our pleasure to be here tonight to share with you our first update on a change initiative around belonging and behavior. The work group will be led by Chris Lingan. We are poised to be meeting technically Thursday. For our first meeting, the work group has been identified and is made up from leaders of all levels in our school district, as well as an equity specialist and district leadership. So I think we have a great group of people to work on this change initiative. Just a reminder, the deliverables for this group include map and strengthen student-staff relationships, develop cultures of belonging, implement rituals, routines, and structures that help every student feel accepted, respected, included, and socially supported in the school environment, and implement a restorative approach to discipline. As we'll be, we'll have our first meeting on Thursday, and Chris has prepared homework for the group, so if you're in the group, be ready. In the meantime, you know that we, back in June, we had a Belonging and Behavior Summit, supported and led by Dr. Pecel, that really set the stage for this school year, so we're not waiting for the work of this group. We are trying a lot of great things, and you're going to hear about some of those tonight during the Willow Creek case study. Some of them you've heard about already, like the cell phone procedures that we implemented, the red and green zones. I think a testament to how hard people have worked in the buildings to implement and support this, the procedures were borne out at the student school board, when I understand. The kids were working on norms for that space, and they asked that the zone be a red zone. And all of the kids in the room know what we're talking about, because each of the schools is working to support that initiative. Another example is Speak Up, which, a belonging strategy that we've implemented this year is Speak Up. This is a service that's provided by, it's a product provided by a service that we subscribe to to support students and keep them safe in terms of their Google mail and their Google drives. You might know it more because we had a little bit of a snag with our Google, our Gmail, our student Gmail, we had to shut our Gmail down earlier in the school year due to a mistake made not on our end and not by our tech. But I do want to say that the company that we work with on Speak Up, which is an initiative to allow students to anonymously report concerns, that they have granted us, thanks to the work of Don Carlson putting together a case, they've granted us a full year of service next year free. So that's about a $90,000 savings because of that error that they made on, back in August or September, actually September. But that is an example of something we're trying to do to foster belonging, and actually really support behavior too, because if kids know that something's going to happen in the building, or there's talk of a fight or something like that, they can use Speak Up to let administrative administration know before it happens, and they don't have to worry about being cattle tales, or that's not what kids call each other anymore, do they?
Snitches.
Snitches, yeah, you don't want to be a snitch. Okay, so we're also here tonight to share, like Dr. Pecel mentioned, a mini case study on these strategies that Chris is going to talk about in a minute, but my other Chris, and isn't it cute, they're twins tonight, and wasn't it twin day at Willow Creek today?
It was twin day.
It was twin day.
Unplanned, but Chris and Chris, nice job. So Chris Lingan is going to share a little bit about belonging and behavior from a district level, and then we'll move on to this case study with the Willow Creek team.
Good evening. We'll talk a little about some of the behavior, belonging things, that, just a little snapshot of things that are going on within the district. Examples for belonging, start of the school year, we had sixth and ninth graders only days for the first day of schools. This allows for some thoughtful onboarding of students to assist in the transition, some opportunities to build relationships with staff and other students, just a way to get to know that new building when they came in. And so that was all sixth and ninth graders this year, all our middle schools and high schools. We also, a little bit, you might hear more about this, what's with belonging a little later, but some of the advisory stuff that our middle schools are doing, Willow Creek may talk about what they're doing a little bit with some of their advisory things, and their cool things that they're doing with that sense of belonging piece within that part also. Some behavior things, we're continuing to strengthen our consistency between levels and sites, I mean, that's a continuation that we're always working on. I know that's something that always comes up, well, if it happens here, it's going to happen here also. We're continuing to do that with scenarios and different things within our sites. We are holding students accountable for the behaviors that violate our expectations that are in our student handbook. We're going to continue to do this. Schools are using suspension behaviors for significant disruptions, for assault of behavior, physical behaviors, for drugs. of behavior, physical behaviors, for drugs, alcohol, those type of things. We'll continue to, to do those within what our handbook says. Also, we attempt to limit our number of suspensions we're having. You've heard kind of our data a little bit in response to the behaviors, but while we tend to limit some of those, we have to use suspension and use it in situations that are non-bias. We use them throughout our schools and again, it's conversations whether they communicate with our office, communicate with their team, about what other people are doing or other sites are doing in a situation like this. We have lots of communication with those things, so they're not on an island by themselves. Office of School Support, Jackie and my office with Eric Johnson, we talk to buildings constantly, whether it's talking about their data, talking about discipline situation, but we're in communication with them, so we have an understanding of what's going on within the buildings. We have a parent that comes to see us, or we have a community member that's concerned about something, or one of you come to see us, we're able to, this is the situation that took place. We don't like to be surprised and the buildings know that. And they do a good job of keeping us informed within that. Those kind of, some of the line behavior things, just a quick little snapshot of what we're doing district-wide.
I just want to, before Willow, the Willow team shares what they brought with them tonight, I want to give you a sneak peek. Dr. Pecel and I have been out to listen to students and their perspective on how things are this year at Willow Creek compared to last year. Today, we met with parents and with staff to hear how they feel the school year has started. This is out of the mouths of middle schoolers, so I've never told them directly and it's all clean. The leadership overall and the teachers have made it better, more strict and getting down to it. People are not in the bathrooms hanging out like they were last year. It's just not happening anymore. If you report something, it gets taken care of. It's not blown off. The hallways aren't crowded and kids are not running from teachers all the time. There are not fights for just no reason and there haven't been fights at all, really. Last year, teachers would say something and then maybe not follow through, but this year there's follow-through. The lunchroom has been less crazy. The principal is always standing there, so you can't do anything. Last year, they kind of gave up on it, it feels like. Last year, they kind of gave, gave up on us, it feels like. Mr. Fogarty cares about us. Last year, it didn't seem like teachers liked their jobs whatsoever. This year, they seem to like their jobs and they talk to you and stuff. Those are just some quotes from the kids yesterday. They had a lot of other things to say that we're going to share with Mr. Fogarty about pickleball and FIAAD and wanting juice at lunch. It was very telling, just some of the things that they shared and I think you'll hear the why right now when Chris and his team share.
Thank you, Jackie. Good evening, everyone. So I was asked late last year to go assist over at Willow Creek and that's where I was called to be and so that's where I went to serve. And it was great to be back there. And then the last day of school, I was offered the position to continue on this here as interim principal. So I was very excited about that opportunity. I started my career at Willow Creek. My two daughters went through Willow Creek, my wife went through Willow Creek. I love that school. And when I was there during the month of May, I saw that we just needed some unification to take place and, you know, Kathy, if you remember some of the conversations we had about John Hattie's work when we were at Sentry together, that collective teacher efficacy was there. I saw the talent, I saw the commitment to our kids, but I saw the burnout, I saw the pain, I saw a lot of different things that we needed to figure out and in a hurry. So given that opportunity, we got to dig in this summer. So I knew we had to do something epic right away because really, that's what the kids deserve, that's what that staff deserves. And we're not going to settle for anything less than a world-class school. I'm committed, I've done this work a long time, I'm not going to be a part of anything that's mediocre. We're going to get to it, we're going to get some work done. So I saw this talent and I saw that what we needed to get done was, I know my teachers were working super hard. And then I saw this talented group of what you'll see is called RAF, and I thought of the name, it's okay. Response, act. Act had to happen. We had to be able to be responsive to what was happening from what I saw. We had to be able to take action, we had to also provide feedback, whether it was to the students, the parents, and certainly the staff on how can we minimize or reduce this recidivism. And then the T is for team. So we meet every morning, this group of social workers, counselors, your behavior specialists that you'll hear from soon, coaches, and we meet and we deploy, what are the three most important conversations we need to take every day? What are the three most important actions? So everyone knows what the right hand and left hand are doing to support our teachers, to be in front of any of these issues with our kids. Our advisory meetings, I saw this as an opportunity. You can fit the whole grade level in the advisory, so let's get to work and meet with them on common messages, common expectations about belonging, about what the behaviors are and what the expectations are and that they are loved, they are cared for, and they are a big deal and that they deserve this world-class school. Because they do, we're in the shadows of the Mayo Clinic. We have a model right there to take care of our kids. The collective teacher efficacy is a big deal. And then making sure that they see me, my other administrators who are also new, and that we needed to unify. And we're not done. We're going to be persistent, we're going to be relentless in our pursuit to continue to strive for that world-class school. Yes, I'll introduce my team. Closer to my left is Kristi Howell, English teacher, and she will start off with what she has seen and heard from the last.
Okay, there I go. Out of my wheelhouse here. I'm just going to start by saying, I think, you know, we've had a lot of talented admins in the past and it takes the right combination. And the combination that we have is absolutely amazing. And Chris and the team has engaged with us in a lot of conversations that allowed us to air out some things and to build trust and to build a relationship among ourselves, which helped us unify. And then beyond that, it, when we had these conversations, we developed common language. So we'd have conversations, how do we want this to look? And it wasn't, well, eighth grade can do this, seventh grade, sixth grade. No, we are all together and so we all have each other's back. And so if a kid says something to you like, well, why is it this way? We can explain the why and we can say, look, we're a unified front and we're doing this because we want you to have a level of understanding, so there's no misunderstanding or miscommunication. All the staff feel like they're working together. The, like Jackie said, the staff feel safer and they feel heard. So if you go back to like Shiroki Holley, that validate and affirm, I think that was the first time this fall, and I'll never forget it, I said it to Mrs. Trapp, I'm like, this was the best first week of school I've had in years. And she goes, oh, we had our hiccups. I'm like, no, 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 no. This was better than our best day last year. And to say that and not go up to the room and feel like you're just depleted was really quite amazing. Everyone feels like they belong, that their voice matters, that things are going to get handled regardless of who you go to. And a testament to the leadership is, again, we feel like we can be vulnerable, like we can make a mistake. Or if we need to ask for help, we can go ask for help versus going down there and getting the head tilted to the side going, well, have you worked on this? And usually by the time we were going down there, we have worked on a lot of different avenues, but it always comes back on what we're doing versus what can we do as a team? And that's where I think that RAF team comes in and it really fosters growth. And then with that, you have this, we're proactive versus reactive. But since Chris and his team trust us to do our job and really knows that we're, they know that we are in there because we love the kids, we're trusting the kids more. And so all of a sudden, you've seen this increase in having fun. Two years ago, we never would have trusted the students to do a Halloween contest like we did yesterday. Like, they would have shown up with something that was inappropriate and it would have been, you know, all over TikTok. These guys are having fun and they're asking to do more and more fun engaging things because it's like, oh, we can if we get down to work. And so it's just to see the culture go from being toxic to being positive and seeing kids enjoying and laughing and coming in and being able to have those, you know, really fun conversations is just, I don't know, it's empowering, it's revolutionary, it's healing. Yeah, it's just amazing. It's a testament to every.
Next to Kristi is Jake Bertram, one of my former students from Willow Creek, but currently working as our special education behavior interventionist.
Yeah, work is fun. We're, we're these teachers are coming to school and conversing about getting back to just enjoying, being jovial, right, with our students, with our staff. And I just wanted to start with that. We're having a blast. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the impact that a lot of the different interventions that are being put in place. And I know Monica is going to talk more in depth about some of those things as well. But truly through consistent collaboration as a staff, a team, as our RAF team, and collectivity and transparency, not only as staff, but with our students, we are building such a strong sense of trust at Willow Creek Middle School. And we know that trust, there are roots for strong relationships, right? And with strong relationships come a strong sense of belonging. And it has been so rejuvenating to feel that, right, to see it, to hear it as a staff and for our students. It's special stuff, without a doubt. And so through that, that feeling of unity and togetherness, we felt a shift in energy in the building. I was at a trauma-informed schools institute with Monica Maloney and another one of my coworkers, Joe Adams. And they did talk about energy a little bit. And I, I would love for anyone, you know, listening just in general, to come into Willow Creek and feel the energy. Because it's different. It feels novel. And it's, it's awesome. And with that shift in energy, we are creating systems of support for all students. I believe, and we believe that all students feel like they have a system of support, meaning people that they know can support them, lean, they can lean on, whether that's academic or that's social, emotional, or that, you know, pertains to mental health. And Kristi alluded to a little bit, but it allows for us to be more spontaneous and creative with our students. And knowing the Halloween, the Halloween contest was, was stellar. I think anyone would have came in there and really enjoyed it. In years past, and it's, it's not, you know, negativity or cynicism, but it would have been a worry in just for different reasons. And it really, it brought staff and students together. I mean, I know it's, it's a Halloween contest, but if you're in our building and you're watching the interactions between staff and students and, you know, eighth grade doing their own theme and you've got Harry Potter here, it was just, it was so, again, refreshing. I did want to speak quickly to, with that energy comes our ability as staff to feel more regulated just in general. And I think that allows us to better access and more easily regulate our students, which fosters those relationships, which is just, it's super neat. You know, I go, I come up, we come home, I come home and I talk to my wife about these things. And it's, it's so healthy to have these positive conversations. We have our PBIS reward system that we're really getting rolling. You have the referral system. We also have the positive, the, the positive, you know, reinforcements, the points. We want our students at the end of quarters to have an auditorium movie, a swimming day. Some of these, I was, I, yeah, I attended Willow Creek and a lot of these big events, end of the quarter stuff, this was, I mean, this was common, right? It felt typical, it felt normative, right? I think, or I know that we're getting back there and it's really exciting. You know, and lastly, I, we're achieving this, everyone here, largely due to our staff at Willow Creek and the work we're doing and our students. But I don't want to pass it along to Monica without saying that without our leadership and Chris Fogarty and Don Trapp and Sam Oll as assistants, you know, we wouldn't be, I don't believe, achieving what we are. And it feels really good to be led, to follow and to also lead as a teacher leader in such a healthy manner. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Next to Jake is Monica Maloney, behavior specialist.
Hi, I'm Monica Maloney. As Chris said, I'm our behavior specialist. So large function of my job is the behaviors in our building and supporting our staff and our students. One major shift and change that I see in our building this year is really about communication and consistency. Last year, obviously, I was there and there to help, but we didn't really have policies or procedures in place. How do students access me? When do they come to me? How do they get to me? Those are things we just didn't have. It was more jumping around. So through our conversations this summer, really working with the new admin team and team of teachers, we pulled together and we said, how do we want that to look? We're just being more intentional at Willow this year and it's, it's leading to better student outcomes. With that process of how to get help, we looked at identifying student need. Students were expressing a need to be, have a break, get out of class. I need, I need a minute to reset. And what does that look like? So we came up with a plan, a flow chart of how that should look. Then during our advisories, we rolled that out in the large group to the whole student body. That way, teachers and students and staff could all hear, what does it look like? How do you get the support? What do you do? That consistent language. We developed a website so that kids can seek out that help they need before they're in trouble. Really focusing in on that positive behavior support. You can reach out for help when you need it, not when we're already down the road. And also looking at our, our practices as we do re-entries for those students who we, we do need to do a suspension with, making sure that as they come back, we make sure they feel welcomed back. They look at the team of people that are with them and see, these people are here to support you. We want you to be successful at Willow. What do you need from us? How can we be successful? Every student that comes back, we have a meeting with them, their parents, we come up with a plan, we again communicate that plan out to staff. Staff feel supported because they're hearing what's happening. There was a problem in my classroom. I know that it's been addressed. I know that the student's ready to come back. I'm also working to do more restorative conversations between staff and students, finding time for students and staff to go build relationships. Outside of the prep time, they don't have to give up prep time to go build a relationship with a student. They can do that within the classroom time and I can help support those classrooms. More with communication, just constant feedback. I feel like our administrative team is really listening, listening to what students need, listening to what staff need, and then responding to that by coming up with new ways of doing things. We've identified red zone classes, red and yellow zone students where, where we need more supports, and then we flood support that direction before it becomes a big problem. And as Jake said, it's a fun place to be this year. Last year, sometimes you'd walk around and you'd just see the exhaustion on people's faces, students, staff. There were weights on shoulders last year. And when you walk around the building this year, there's fist bumps and high fives and, awesome, I saw you do the thing, you know? It's just, it's an exciting place to work this year and it's, it's really great to see. And as Jake said, that, that ties back to our leadership team. We've made really great decisions, pulling Chris and his team into our building. And, and they're doing an amazing job leading us and also fostering leaders within our building, students and staff. We've encouraged staff to reach out and lead new teams and students are leading things in our building and, and asking for things and, and being allowed to share their feedback and really being heard. So it's just, it's really been great to be a part of the changes that I've seen at Willow this year.
Before we turn it back to the board for questions, I have one thing off that they didn't spend money on programs. They didn't buy anything. This team has worked together collaboratively, like you've heard, to put their plan in motion and it is having a positive impact. Mr. Fogarty, Mr. Oll and Ms. Trapp, aside from the teacher, which we know is the first key ingredient to a successful experience for students, the administration is second in importance. And this team has brought the opportunity, I think, for the staff who, who have really embraced the opportunity to, to collaborate. I had the opportunity to be at their staff meeting last Tuesday. Was it just last Tuesday?
Tuesday before.
Okay, and, eye flies. But first, I witnessed your staff with the world-class school t-shirts that they had hidden under their clothing. They presented a t-shirt to Chris because that's kind of your tagline, world. It's not kind of, it is your tagline.
It is.
And so that was a big surprise and it was a really neat thing to see the whole staff come together. But then I watched your staff, I watched you guys do your, your committee updates and I, I couldn't help but see the positive interaction among staff. You're cheering each other on, you're extremely positive and supported, supporting of one another and you look brighter this year. We've spent a lot of time with the staff last year and there's just an overall positive affect coming. affect coming from the staff. And I just commend you all for, for working together the way you have to, to accomplish what you have in such a short time. And then I will just say, I have a couple quotes from the staff and they're also clean. Just from today, a few things, a few things that staff said. It's been a complete turnaround from last year. It's shocking how different it can be and it's a lot of things, not just one thing. Mr. Fogarty encourages me to do my best. He's like a coach. This teacher said, I told my students this. It's not just leadership, it's coaching. Chris Fogarty knows every kid's name. I have not been in the hallway a single time when Mr. Fogarty hasn't known a student's name. And then they also acknowledge that Sam and Dawn do the same. One teacher said, I see my sixth graders able to be sixth graders again. This teacher said that he is awarding PBIS points like crazy and the kids are not sure what they're doing. That's so great, but he's just so proud of them for being independent learners. And then finally, one teacher said, I, it's amazing how often my administration says yes to new ideas. I feel trusted by the administration. I feel listened to and I feel very supportive. So, I'll turn it over now to...
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just want to make one quick point. Whenever you do a case study like we've just done and you look at one school, there's a danger in thinking that this is an outlier. This is a total exception. And we are privileged to have amazing educators here in front of us and at Willow Creek. But we have got belonging and behavior underway in different ways in every secondary school across this district. And so while Willow Creek was starting from a very challenging place and some unique decisions needed to be made there, we have an entirely new administrative team, not because we didn't have great people there before, but we needed to make a shift. We are seeing, as I mentioned before, a 28% reduction this year over last year across the district as a whole. So, while Willow Creek's reduction of 58% from a very high level of disciplinary problem is extraordinary, it's not the only story. So, in sharing with you this case study, it's not because we couldn't have asked colleagues at our other middle schools and high schools to come and talk about the work that they're doing as well. So, I wanted to just add that context and then I'm sure the team will be happy to answer questions.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Barlow.
Yes, I have three things. First of all, what a blessing, you know, I, we have heard from members of the community, individuals telling us what we aren't, okay? But tonight, you affirm who we are. And, and so thank you for that. We benefit those who are present and certainly those who may later view this online. And this is, you are Rochester Public Schools. And, and so I, I can't say that loud enough or more purposefully than I already have. So, so thank you for being that. Then secondly, as you spoke of the connections that staff and students are having in the, having in the school, I thought, well, those students ultimately go to a place called home. And sometimes those are the places that may create some of the challenges that you are confronted with or are faced to deal with. And, and so are there any strategies or are you doing anything that perhaps can reach ultimately into those homes, the, the parents, the, the families, other RPS students who may be siblings of those attending Willow?
I'll just give you a brief example of a conversation that was had today between, that was spearheaded by Don Trapp and Lydia Casper in her role. They came out for a visit and we just today had a meeting and Mr. Virchum was in there and a few other folks with County Public Health and also the County Sheriff's Department on how we can support kids who have parents that are incarcerated. So, as far as even just going beyond the home, but when a kid, and I learned a new term today from the public health nurse, ambiguous loss, which the child did not lose a parent to death, but there is some other type of absent parent. So, we're always learning and trying to figure out how we can continue to partner with our community and our families to see what we can do, do to come together. So, that's just one, just very vibrant and new example of what we're going to try to do to support kids that are in that situation and then continue to do those supports with the kids at home. Do you want to speak a little bit about the family engagement night coming up on November 17?
Yeah, we're still in the planning stages, kind of. So, we're going to have our first family engagement night on the 17th and we've engaged, or we've invited our equity specialists and they're coming. Yahia is a tremendous, highly respected member of the community and I believe he's going to help us pull in our Somali families. We are trying to get it sent, the message out in the three different languages. And the focus of this one will be, come on in, let's have a conversation. Are you signed up correctly on Skyward? If you need a translator, doesn't say that, or what home language, because we found some errors in that. Do you need a free and reduced lunch form? Can we help you get this stuff set up? What can we help you do? How are we going to communicate with you? How can you check your students' progress? Because oftentimes, some of our EL families, the kids are the translators for the parents and so we need to be able to have the conversation with them. So, the idea is to go through three rotations. So, there'll be an English speaking, they'll, they'll go through the three sessions and then Somali and Spanish. And then have just a talking point where they can come down there and they can talk with us. We'll have, we're going to try to get cookies and coffee and something else. And so it's a pretty informal, but just to get them in, we're also offering free daycare for school-aged childcare. We have partnered with Mayo High School's Honor Society and Key Club, Key Club, to come down. The students have signed up, 10 students for each session and an adult will be in there, one of the teachers will be in there helping to monitor. They'll have games and coloring sheets, arts and crafts, Disney movie for the kids that just want to sit down and try to make it as engaging and fun as possible. So, we start to build trust with some of those families that are at risk so they know that they can come to us. And again, it's not a, anything to be ashamed of. It's just, we're here to help, but we, it's not what. And we will help once we know, because when we know better, we do better. And so we're trying to get that partnership and starting to lay the groundwork.
And then finally, and Jackie, I don't know, the, first of all, thank you for the link to the research, the psychological sense of school membership among adolescents. Not an easy read, at least for me it wasn't. I'll go through it probably two more times. But what it does is, I think, help members of the community understand why we're emphasizing belonging and behavior. It, it isn't just, you know, something to throw money at or place people in positions to do, but there's a science behind it. And I think we're seeing the evidence of the embracing of, of the concept and I'm looking forward to seeing our own perhaps research paper developed and presented because there's a wonderful story that's being evolved even now and, and we get to hear, you get to be part of it, our students get to benefit from it. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Nathan.
I'm not going to thank you more than Director Barlow has because he did, he did a wonderful job. But I also want to express to the Willow Creek staff, both past and present, how important it was that you stuck with it for the kids through the difficulties of last year, when the superintendent, you know, took the actions even at the end of last year to try to address it. That was probably the hardest time for you to do it because you were so immersed in it. And the fact that it continued into the Behavior and Belonging Summit after the school year ended and that you had a plan before the school year started. And, I mean, we're, we're just at the beginning of November and to see how much progress is, is a testament to your dedication. And I'm so glad to see that you're, you're getting the feedback that, especially from the students that, that it's working. Kristi, I, I know a lot of what we heard about what was happening at Willow last year. There was, there's a lot of talk about bathrooms and hallways and can you tell us a little bit about how this overall approach to belonging has changed the academic environment in your classroom and what, what the kids are able to focus or work on because of this?
Yeah, I, I think a lot of it comes down to, we set the groundwork or the foundation for high expectations and students meet whatever expectation you have for them. And so when we had the expectation, like, you gotta put your phone away, it's a red zone and here's why, we need you to focus on this right now, because it'll take your brain this long to come back if you're going on social media or whatever. And when you put it down, you get to have a face-to-face conversation and actually get to know a person versus being behind a screen. Because I think for far too long, and COVID certainly did not help, they got used to sitting behind a screen and they learned those interpersonal, you know, communication skills and how to be a friend and how to listen. And I think all of this just came together and strengthened it because all of a sudden they're putting the technology down, they are interacting face-to-face, they're willing to engage in collaborative group work because they know they're being held to a standard of, you need to do your part. They're not going to pick up the slack for you, you need to do this. And so it's created this much healthier environment. The students aren't yelling out in anger or in frustration. They're not trying to escape because they don't know how to cope with the situation. They may say, I need to go take a quick break, but Monica, Jake and Jenny have done a great job of like, you need to go, like, we're going to unpack this, now you go back to class. And if they need a longer break, then they get to go sit down in the office. And they have made it welcome and inclusive in there because they have comfortable chairs and they have a desk for the student to work on. You can be here, but you still have to work. Like, you can't escape the work. And so we've spent a lot of time talking about if you are refusing right now, you're, you won't become, will quickly become a can't when you get into high school. So, you need to be engaging right now. And I think the honesty and the transparency, which has also been, has increased since Mr. Fogarty and the team have taken over, then we're more transparent with the student and it just, everything feeds and spirals into each other and they're happier and they are more engaged in what we're asking them to do because they see the point and they see that, Jackie mentioned this, that we seem happier. And so I think everything just feeds into it and they are not trying to escape the room. And they set the policy one person out at a time. So, now they can't meet up with their friends and go do things. And they didn't push back on it. They're like, okay, this is just the way it is. And they roll with it. So, I don't know if that answers fully, but it's just, it's absolutely amazing to see the fun that they're even having and that they're not trying to disengage, that they're actually trying to engage.
Dr. Garcia.
I also want to thank you all. The psychologist in me wants to validate, I think similar to what Director Nathan was saying, that I, I can't imagine how difficult it must have been to see this through and knowing that you're all, you are all doing it for the kids and how much they need you. And I think the imagery of raft, even though you're not super enthused about the title, I, I can feel in your description just how, like, in this sea of, like, ocean of emotion and behaviors, you were just like out there and you just needed that life raft and you offered that not only to each other, but to everyone in your immediate community. And I'm so happy to hear about all of the positive changes. And I feel like for any of you, obviously, you can contact members of the board if you feel like there are additional things that you need, whatever life raft you require to be able to continue doing this work. And I also wanted to just acknowledge too, so, you know, developing brains are happy when we have, you know, structure, boundaries, clearly communicated expectations and responses to behaviors. And I think that, that is also true for adults, right? So, our brains hopefully are fully formed by now, but we also appreciate that structure and the ability to be creative within that structure, I think, sometimes. So, whatever you're doing, all of these wonderful things, please keep doing them, but also feel free to reach out and let us know what other things that you might need because I can, I can recognize that it's been two and a half plus years of you just carrying all of this weight on your back. And if you're not also taking care of yourselves, let those of us who, it's our responsibility to do that, do that for you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Ms. Workman.
First of all, maybe Mr. Fogarty should cover his ears so his head won't explode. But I had the opportunity to observe a sixth grade, all the sixth graders in the auditorium about a month ago where you were conducting a program. I'm not, I don't remember exactly what all the details were, but really impressed me was, were two things. First of all, the sixth graders came in and you would think, well, this is going to be like herding cats. But they knew where to go, they sat down. And then once the lesson began, it wasn't one of those, oh, they're going to talk at us now and we have to listen. But the engagement that you had with the students and asking them to participate, raise your hand and participate in calling them, calling on them, no, me, 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 was just, it was a breath of fresh air. So, after saying all of that, I'd really like you to talk a little bit and tell us what mall ball was all about. Because I saw the video and it looked like everyone was having a wonderful time, but can you maybe give us the context for, for that?
Yeah, so we're, we're backing off on our auditorium advisement through, you know, panel this week. We've got people just doing each grade level one per week, not a two-year warranty. And then we have this gigantic bracket of teams to get through advisory for mall ball. And it's essentially volleyball in the mall area with the beach ball. Just the energy that it brings for the kids to be able to have them come in and they compete against another advisory. Reed Olson, our technology guru, he spearheads it with a couple other teachers, Dina, Dina Keef and a few others. They take the lead on it. And it's just one of those things that when a student looks back, hey, remember when we used to play mall ball? It's brewing some energy. Kids will be lined up along the mezzanine area there and they're cheering each other on and having fun. And then we go from, you know, our advisement's 8:10 to 8:30 and then they break and they go on to the second hour. So, advisory is called the first hour. So, yes, that's been mall balling it for years, back even when I was teaching there before to mall ball. It's kind of a big deal.
You know, you would, you would think with so many kids in that area that there could be who knows what going on. But, oh my gosh, they were supporting each other, they were excited, they were well-behaved. And, oh my gosh, they were having an awful lot of fun. And I think when students can experience that in school and have those kinds of experiences with each other and with the staff, that then once they return to the classroom, that sets the stage for serious academic learning that needs to happen. And you said we were going to hear a report on that...
December.
...in December. So, I look forward to that, to seeing how you're meshing these two things.
Well, yeah, I have abundant expectation that our, that I trust our kids that they'll do the right thing. So, when we talk about our topics in advisement, it's really just been in relation to the graduate profile, but in very significant focused terms, one day with skills and we maybe we're on skills, trust. And we talk to them and trust was one of them and it's very, it's a 12 to 15-minute shot of energy in the morning with the kids on, we want to be able to trust you and you need to be able to trust us. We just don't get the, the assessment built over time like Jake was saying. And then when we trust you, can you imagine all the fun things we're going to do and what we can do with your education? Because the energy you will provide your teacher from not having to manage you versus being able to lead you happens when we get on board with listening the first time because let's face it, everything your teachers are going to ask you is extremely reasonable and fair. Agreed? Yep. Anything fair? Everything fair? Yep, unreasonable? Let's talk through that if you feel it's unreasonable. So, given that opportunity to have that dialogue, but it starts with that trusted relationship. It starts with, you know, you have to leave here with skills. That's the, that's the, that's the foundation is that we need to make sure these kids have skills, academic, social, emotional wellness skills. We're going to be very persistent. So, you're welcome to come any Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday from here on out to see advisor or Thursday or Friday and see mall ball, your choice. But you are more than welcome to come anytime. We meet 8:10 to 8:30. Next Tuesday we won't obviously because it's end of the quarter, but after that, we're going to keep going with it. They need that redundancy, they need that practice, they need that structure. And there's going to be a good message with it, but it's going to be engaging and it's going to be fun. I have to answer, so what? Who cares what's in it for me? And that's what I expect of my teachers, my staff. So, whenever you're leading anyone, you need to ask, you need to be able to answer one of those three questions to your audience. So what? Who cares what's in it for me? And I learned that from Dr. Craig and if any of you know who Dr. Craig is and if you've ever heard him speak, he's remarkable. So, I learned that really in my years.
So, just to, to close this out, this was a wonderful presentation. I was really, really pleased to hear you talk about fun. And I think when you're describing it, it goes beyond fun, it's joy. When kids feel that they are respected, that you believe in them, they're going to work harder, they're going to act better. they're gonna act better. And I think that makes them feel better, it makes them feel more hopeful that they have a future and they want you to continue to be proud of them. So that was one thing. And the second thing, and Mr. Fogarty, I'm speaking to you directly, when Dr. Garcia said, let us know if there's anything you need, she didn't mean caramel rolls.
She did.
That's what you want.
See how that goes.
Dr. Marvin, I didn't use any sports analogies. RRAFT has nothing to do with a sports team.
RRAFT? Isn't that something that you use in water?
No, no. And that gives me joy that for once you stayed away from the sports analogy.
Yes, I did, just for you.
No, this was spectacular, thank you so, yes, sir.
All right, can I say one more thing?
Not about caramel rolls, though, yeah.
They are delicious.
Oh, yeah, that sounds amazing. We just as a team, us three, without leaving today, and the staff of Willow Creek, wanted to say these words, and that was, is to consider removing the interim title of our principal, Chris Fogarty, and we wanted to make that known. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fogarty is not blushing, but, thank you so much, thank you.
I think they hit a home run.
Dr. Garcia, so close. And then you had to go there. Home run. Onto monitoring, seven point oh one, superintendent goals 2022, 2023. Dr. Pecow.
Dr. Marvin and Directors of the Board, you will recall that the board reviewed an initial draft of the goals for my work during the 2022, 2023 school year, about a month or so ago, well, no, in August, before the start of the school year. And the board directed that the executive committee, which consists of the Chair, the Vice Chair, and myself, refine the first draft of the goals based on some of the feedback from the board. And so what we're bringing to you tonight for final approval is that revised set of our goals. The big change, and there are a number of others that are outlined in the memo that the board members have received and that is on board docs, the big change is that we wanted to have evaluation of my work that is timely enough to inform what I'm gonna be doing in the following school year, but that also incorporates the outcomes that we collectively achieve during any given school year, which unfortunately, we in some cases receive significantly after the end of that school year. And so what we've done is we've split the evaluation up in our proposal to you into two components. The first would be what we're calling a leadership component, and that'd be evaluation of the work I did and my own performance as a leader into the first part of the evaluation, which would take place during the summer, I think our rough assumption is July, every year. And then an outcomes component of my evaluation that would take place in October when we have all the data on the previous school year. So the leadership component would still provide me with direction from the board and guidance in years where there might be, you know, some contract discussions, which I'm happy to say is not the case, you know, for this year, it would be factored into those discussions. And then we would still be able to have a discussion of our outcomes in the fall. So with that big picture shift, the four goals that we're recommending from the executive committee to the full board be adopted for my work this year are, number one, which is all about student outcomes, we will make statistically significant improvement on three or more of the system indicators that will be used to measure progress toward the goals of the Rochester Public Schools Strategic Plan. You've seen an initial draft and had a study session on those system indicators and we'll be bringing them to you for final approval in our World's Best Workforce Board meeting coming up. But they're about student academic outcomes, student environment for, student social emotional competencies, environment for learning, and environment for staff, the work environment. So that's the recommendation, that we would achieve statistically significant improvement in three or more of those indicators for the current year. The second is that we develop the change initiatives in the strategic plan sufficient that the board members, that board members can review the plans that are being developed. You just heard Jackie and Chris Ling and talk about the launch of the development of our detailed plan for belonging and behavior, that you would be able by this summer to review the plans for nine of those initiatives and evaluate them against the framework for SMART goals, that they are, oh, gosh, now, can I remember off the top of my head the acronym for SMART goals? Of course I can. Specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, time-bound. So the second, and the goals that we would be evaluated, the plans that we'd be evaluating this year are Student Center Deeper Learning, Core Academic Initiative, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, Core Academic Initiative, School Belonging and Behavior, School Options and Start Times, Community Partnerships to Enrich and Extend Learning, Leadership Development, Post-Secondary Pathways, Student and Staff Mental Health and Family Engagement Framework. So you'd be evaluating the quality of the plans that we develop for long-term change in each of those areas. That's number two. Number three, we were, we, we thought a lot about the language we had in our previous draft and we ended up with, I think, the same goal but a simpler formation. And that is that the district closes the 2022, 23 school year with no budget deficit, that we balance the books, even as we're working toward longer-term structural balance in our structural deficit. And then finally, the board would evaluate my work against a set of leadership competencies that we have begun to develop for all of our leaders. And so that you would be evaluating my work in the same way that we would be evaluating principals and other district leaders. The board may choose to adapt a few of those things to reflect my role at the system level from different, from a principal's role at the building level, but you will be seeing those competencies as part of our strategic plan development process. So I think taken together, this is an ambitious set of goals, but it's not an unrealistically ambitious set of goals. I think they're all measurable, too. We will be able to say at the end of the day if I did it or didn't. And I think they're appropriately scoped to the influence of the superintendent, which is of course not, as we just heard at Willow Creek, at the building level, but is important in creating the conditions where they can do work like what we just heard about. So that's our proposed revision of the goals for the current year.
Any questions?
I appreciate your ambition.
Thank you.
We need a vote?
We, huh? We haven't voted. So yes, I think we do need a vote. We, we generally agreed on them in the study session and previously, but we haven't, haven't voted on the goal, so my sense is that we
Well, do we want to do that tonight? I mean, we don't have a resolution here, do we want to do that tonight? Do we want to do it at the next meeting? I'm just thinking, have you had enough time? My thinking was you have some time to consider this and then we could vote to approve these at our next meeting.
Do I do that?
Does that work?
Sure.
Good.
Good.
And we've got it on the agenda. Okay. Eight point oh one, Policy Committee Meeting Recommendations. This is the second reading of the policies that have already been briefed. Policy Committee, do you have anything to add or does anyone have questions about these policies? No? Okay, that's good. And then they will appear on the consent agenda at the next meeting. Then we'll move on to eight point oh two, the 2023, 2024 Course Registration Guide, including new course addition. We will not be voting on this tonight because this is a prep for action, but it, we will get some information on this. Dr. Pecow.
Chair Marvin and Directors of the Board, it's my pleasure to ask Heather Willman, who leads our secondary curriculum and instruction efforts, to come up and give the board a brief. Your approval of the registration guide and course additions is required in board policy. And so that's why we're bringing this for you in preparation today for, as Chair Marvin said, action at your next meeting. And as always, the materials are available online, so anyone who's interested in the details. Heather, thank you.
All right, this will be very brief. We are changing just one course from Emergency Medical Technician to Emergency Medical Responder. The reason for this is that it's a co-taught course and Mayo Clinic is no longer able to provide that support with staffing. So we're looking at Emergency Medical Responder, which will be more of an entry-level course. And so we will be offering that at CTEC. And that's really the, the most substantive change.
Questions, Ms. Workman?
Yeah, so would you anticipate that the curriculum then would be significantly different?
Yeah, I think the curriculum will be a little, will be different because we will have, Dr. Welch will be teaching it and he's one of our instructors at CTEC. So there's not as much technical information, so we will see a difference in that.
Mr. Barlow.
And so as a result of the transition and name EMT to EMR, will those who successfully complete the course be able to utilize this as a, for the credentialing process to either become a firefighter or a police officer?
Yes, so this kind of, this plays into the pathway of our firefighter mentorship, our intro to health science careers, and then anatomy and physiology all kind of play into this. So it's still kind of in that pathway, but more of an introductory course. And then students would have to go on to do more to be an EMT.
Thank you, Heather. And we have an action item nine point oh one, Approval of Audit Report for the 2021, 2022 Fiscal Year. Dr. Pecow.
It is my pleasure, Directors of the Board, to ask John Carlson, our Executive Director of Finance Technology, to come up and welcome our friendly audit firm. And I'm happy to say it's friendly because it's once again a very, very good audit and that is something that we should never take for granted. So I want to thank John and his entire team for the leadership that they have shown in an organization of our size, to have an audit that is this clean is a significant accomplishment. And that doesn't happen without many, many hours and a lot of diligence, so.
Great, thank you Superintendent Pecow, Chair Marvin, for that filler while I got the computer working. So I'm pleased to have Nancy here from Bergen KDV, and she's gonna give you the annual audit report and go through the finances as we close the books.
Thank you, John. Good evening, members of the board and administration. Thank you for giving me time to go over the results of our audit this evening, and I will be brief. We're gonna talk very high level. So starting out with the results of the audit, we have several written communications that we provide to you as part of our wrap-up of the audit, and the most important is the Independent Auditor's Report. And this you will find in the front of the financial statement document. And it summarizes the work that we do and includes the opinion. And what we're issuing is an unmodified opinion, which is the best that we as your auditors can offer, indicates that everything is fairly stated based on the results of our audit. We have several other pieces of communication, the next one being the Single Audit Report. So because of the significant amount of federal funds that you receive as a school district, we are required to perform a single audit, taking a look at several of your programs. Programs that we tested this year were all COVID funding-related because those are of a higher risk because they're new and unusual for the district. And based on our work, we're giving an unmodified opinion on compliance, so again, the best that we as your auditors can offer, and we had no internal control findings related to the internal control surrounding that compliance. And then we have a report that talks about government auditing standards, and these standards are required for all districts in Minnesota. And they take a closer look at internal controls and also compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grants. And based on that work, again, no findings. And then our last official letter is in accordance with Minnesota legal compliance. So this comes to us from the Office of the State Auditor of Minnesota. They're very specific about the statutes that we test as they relate to accounting matters, and once again, no compliance findings that we noted there. So completely clean, all of those reports with no written, written findings. So congratulations on that.
I would just note, if I can interrupt you, these are posted in our board doc system, so they're online for anybody in the public to read, all hundred and sixty-some pages of materials.
It's a page turner.
It is, very much so.
Or if you're having trouble sleeping. All right, and then we issue a separate document titled Communication Letter, and in there we have several pieces of required communication. So these are things that our standards require us to put in writing to you as the governing board. It would be our tool if we had anything significant or unusual that we uncovered or any disagreements with management, those types of things. Happy to report Clean Bill of Health, if you will, on all of that, nothing that strays from our standard language. And then we also have the financial analysis, which we'll cover tonight, and then in the back, a little bit more light reading, some emerging issues from a government accounting perspective, and also the legislative update. So moving on then to the financial information, starting with the General Education Aid Formula Allowance. So General Education Aid is your largest funding source, so it's under, good to understand the components of the calculation. Basic formula allowance is the key, and you can see we provided you with some history here. And if you look at 2022, you actually did receive two point five, actually two point four five, but we have rounded it to two point five, a percent increase for this year, and expecting two percent again for 2023. The other part of that calculation of General Aid is your student count, so we have several charts and graphs that take a look at that information. And we have five-year perspective, but we're really key in on the differences between 21 and 22 for tonight's discussion. What we're starting with is your resident student count. So these are the students that live within your boundaries and attend either a public school or charter school within those boundaries, outside of those boundaries, but they live within the boundaries. And that number has been stable, if you will, if you look over the five years, some ups and downs in between, and an overall increase of forty-two for 2022. And this chart is the same information in a graphical format, some people see things better that way. The top, the green, is your secondary, and that's where you saw the increase. The other two categories, one increased twenty-one and one decreased twenty-one. So overall, that forty-two came in the secondary category. Now, these weighting factors that you see here are applied to those student counts, and then we also factor in open enrollment, so you can see everybody's at a one point zero with the exception of secondary at one point two. And then we have charts to take a look at those weighted counts. So the top line is your residents, and that increased a little bit more because of the increase in the secondary category at one point two. And then we take a look at residents going elsewhere and non-residents coming into Rochester Public Schools. And that decreased this year, actually decreased, so that's a positive. You had about 2,064 net students leaving, last year that was 2,200. So an improvement there. So overall, students served and students paid general education aid increased by 185. And again, same information in the graphical presentation showing two point two percent of the total population are non-residents. So most of the students that you're serving are residents of Rochester. And then finally, one more chart that shows the relative stability of these numbers with decreases in 2021, which is a common theme across the state of Minnesota with the effects of COVID last year, a lot of students were homeschooled or put into some other private And moving to actual dollar amounts, starting with the revenues in the general fund by source, so we have three different categories, state sources, local property taxes, and then other. And the other includes things like the federal funds and also student activities, those types of things. So overall, an increase of about nine point nine million or four point one percent coming across all of those categories, really. State sources being your largest had the largest increase of about three point nine million related to the general education aid, the formula allowance increased and the increase in students. And then also special education aid increased with the increase in needs of your students. Local property taxes up about three point four million related to an increase in the overall levy for the general fund. And then the other category up about two point six million related to those increased COVID funds that you received, and then also a return to more normal activities for the students, so fees and those types of revenues. When we look at those revenues and then also the expenditures and compare them to your budget, that's what you'll see on this slide. So overall, if you look at bottom line, you originally anticipated deficit spending. You modified the budget to anticipate an increase in the fund balance and you did outperform that budget and increased your fund balance by just under nine million for the year. And when we look at the far right column, that's gonna be your variance column, and follow that all the way back up to total revenues. Those were under budgeted about four point seven million, which is one point eight percent, so really very close to the overall plan. And the biggest variance being in the federal sources, planning for more ESER and some of those other COVID funds to be used that were not. On the expenditure side of things, overall, under budget by four point six percent. And when we look into the details, most of that has to do with conservative budgeting for things like salaries and supplies and contracted services, those types of things. So nothing that really jumps out as unusual or alarming there. Switching gears to look at your expenditures, expenditures were also up about ten point two million, which is four point three percent, so a little bit more than the revenues, primarily salaries with the contract settlement, you had increases across all programs related to that. So again, nothing unusual there. And the next slide takes a look at those expenditures on a per ADM served basis. So the top two portions of the chart are per student So the top two portions of the chart are per-student expenditures and then statewide average. So you have Rochester through 2022, and you can see you do have an increase there, but it's smaller than the overall increase in expenditures because of the increase in students, so up 2.8%. And when we compare back in 2021 Rochester to overall statewide average, you can see you're just a bit below, but pretty close, when we look at the total for the general fund. Other funds vary based on projects that you have going on and debt that you hold, so not a lot of value in comparing those, but the general fund, very close to overall average. And then if you look at the bottom portion of the chart, the first three columns are going to be Rochester for 1920 and '21, and then we have your peer groups that you're used to comparing yourselves to, and then the overall statewide average. So here you can see where the district varies, and I would like to draw you to the special education line. You can see that from statewide average perspective, 2,600 per student, you're spending almost 2,900 per student, so that really drives some of the other variances. And that is just the demographics of the students that you serve. One last expenditure slide that takes a look at two pie charts outlining the percentage spent on each function, and we've included special education, vocational education, and regular instruction, all as instruction. So you're spending 64% of the total on direct instructions of your students, which is a bit above the overall statewide average. And then pulling all of the general fund information together and looking at it very high level, we talked about the increase in revenues and expenditures, the overall increase of fund balance of just under 9 million. So I think what's important here is to look at the number, two numbers up from the very bottom right-hand corner, that's your unassigned, that's what's available for future spending. And if you look back to 2018 and where that number was and where that number is today, there's some positive improvement there. So you have a minimum fund balance policy of 8%, and you're at 13.1, so in compliance with that policy after some diligent work over those five years. And then finally, one last chart on the general fund, and this is unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of unrestricted expenditures. So this is what the state of Minnesota uses for the SOD calculation or the statutory operating debt. So it gives us the ability to compare Rochester with the state and overall averages. And you can see here that your number has been increasing, so a nice upward trend there, and pretty consistent. That 20% that the state has hovered, that's been probably, I don't know, John, 20 years, it's probably been right around 20%. So I would anticipate that you will again for 2022 be very consistent with that state average. And then I have two more slides, and these take a look at your special revenue funds, so food service. A very unusual year for food service with free breakfast and lunch for all students, so revenues were up $6.2 million. Expenditures did increase with increased meals served because they were all free, and then also increased costs for salaries and benefits, but you did increase fund balance by 3.4 million in that fund. So hopefully that will allow you to weather increased food costs and all that we have in the future. And then finally, the community service fund. This fund did return to more normal activities, so increased programs and participation, allowing for an increase in revenues and expenditures, and a nice increase in fund balance after a year of deficit spending in 2021. This fund does have specific funding requirements and buckets that each of the dollars go into, and all of those, the residual was positive at year-end as well. So those appear to be operating appropriately. That is everything that I have. Any questions?
Ms. Amundson.
So if we were in a class about fiscal management and we took a final exam, are you giving us an A+?
I'd love to give you a grade, but to maintain my independence, I need to stick to the facts. So no findings, improved financial health, and that's where we will leave that.
Thank you. Ms. Nathan.
One of the most interesting charts for me every year is when we compare our performance to our peer group. And I think it's also interesting to point out that we continue to be below our peer group and the statewide average for how much we spend on administration, because we get that question a lot, is how much we putting into student instruction versus administration. Can you remind us again what falls into that administration category?
This administration category includes the direct administration and district support services, so John, if you want to talk to the details.
For sure.
Districts vary how they code things, so it's tough to compare yourself directly, but it's very good discussion.
Yeah, for our district, what we're putting in there, and these are consistent UFRS codes that all districts are supposed to use, but there is a little judgment call on what you would put in there, but we put School Board, Office of the Superintendent, Office of School Support, and then our principal, and then the office managers that support them at our buildings. What's interesting is our assistant principals don't fall into administration, they are administrators, that's what we call them, but there's a different code for them, so they're not in that bucket.
So are they in one of the instruction categories?
They would be in the instructional support category.
Okay.
Which also appears, if I'm looking at that.
It would be below.
Below our peer group, but above our statewide average.
Other questions? And we appreciate getting this in advance because it's a lot to go through, and you did a wonderful job of walking us through it, but it was great to have that time. I had to memorize everything. Ms. Workman.
I'll just take a minute. First of all, thank you for presenting this to us, the big overall picture that we can understand, but I would really like to express my appreciation for all the staff who work on this on a daily basis in John's department, but also in food service and all of those other different budgets. It's a tremendous amount of work, and I'm just extremely appreciative of the level of competence that we have in this district to manage all of this and for us to keep having clean reports. So thank you all.
Ms. Nathan.
And Mr. Carlson, you mentioned that people could access this through Board Docs, but there also is a location on our website where we post these.
Yes, we should get this copied into the transparency report, and that's the button you can find at the very bottom right corner of our website, and it has all kinds of other different postings as well, but we'll, we'll get our audit report out there, too.
Thank you.
All right, then we have a resolution. Be it resolved, School Board of Independent School District 535 accept the 2021-2022 audit report of the school district financial records as of June 30, 2022, as submitted by Bergen KDV Limited.
Move approval, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. Thank both of you so much.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and it's a pleasure to work with John and his team. We appreciate you.
He is a great guy. Smart, too, so.
Thanks so much.
Then we will move on to 10.01, upcoming board meeting dates through 12/31/2022. Please note that on the 15th, we will have a special session to certify the results of the school board election at 5:00, followed immediately by the study session. That special session typically lasts five minutes. Then on the 22nd of November, a regular school board meeting at 5:30. December 6th, a study session at 6:00. December 13th, a truth and taxation hearing, 6:00, immediately followed by the regular school board meeting. Any updates to the annual board calendar draft that the A, B, C, D, or I would be, pardon me, are considered for a future agenda? A hearing, none. Then we will move to closed session for labor negotiations. This regular meeting will be moving to a closed session as permitted by Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3A to discuss ongoing labor negotiations. Following the closed session in the Edison Building Conference Room, we will return to the board table. Do I have a motion to recess for this purpose?
Some of.
It's been moved and seconded. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are in recess at 6:56 PM.
This board meeting is convened at 7:25 p.m.
Seven twenty five?
Yes.
This board meeting is convened at seven twenty five p.m. Clerk Barlow, would you please read the names of those present at the closed session?
Present were school board members Jean Marvin, Kathy Nathan, Melissa Atkinson, Julie Workman, Don Barlow, Jess Garcia, Karen McLaughlin, and also Superintendent Pecail.